Been here. If I can just untangle my gavel. The Monday, July 11th, 2022 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal, here. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Mr. Mr. Hill?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements this evening. Moving on to Board and Committee Appointments. As a reminder, if Commissioner would like to make a motion, they could say "as presented" without listing each name, committee, and date, or you can pull something off if you'd like to. Do we have a motion on item one? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just mention the names and the committees. So John Tay- I move that we appoint John Taylor to the Marquette Housing Commission, and Jody Lanciaani, Barbara Oudzi, my apologies, Angela Rayhorn, and Orville Dishno to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for the terms presented in the agenda. Oh, and Amanda Gobert to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Thank you.
And we have a second. Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
I'm just really excited that we have so many people who are signing up to serve on our city committees this week, especially the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. My understanding is that they literally have been unable to meet for a period of time because they don't have enough members. So it's awesome to see three people stepping forward who care about our community to serve on that committee. I'm excited to see somebody stepping up to the Parks and Rec Board, which I served on for a couple of years before being on the commission. And it's also cool to see Mr. Taylor stepping up to serve on the Marquette Housing Commission because I believe he stated at a previous meeting when he was speaking about, you know, his beliefs on affordable housing, that he was going to step up and serve on that committee. So it's cool to see his appointment coming across our desk today.
Commissioner Davis, any additional discussion?
Just the same, thank you. And it's glad that we now have a Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee with four new participants. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address.
Barb Oudzi, 1324. You're the first one that's had trouble with that. 1324 North Front Street, corner of Front and Fair. So I want to thank the commission for approving my position on the Traffic Advisory Committee, which I was told is actually the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee. You may or may not have recalled that I have addressed you before, most recently about the speeding on Fair, East Fair Avenue. I also complained about the lack of safe pedestrian passages during the winter because of plowing issues, you know, plowing snow up on the sidewalks, and also the fact that they plow the north side of Fair, the tax-free side of Fair, which I get why they do that. But anyway, so in terms of the speeding, I think the real issue is that the city prioritizes movement, traffic movement in the city. I, you know, and maybe the focus shouldn't be so much as how do we slow traffic down as much as how do we keep people safe. And hopefully you don't think I'm being disingenuous by saying maybe it should be the Traffic Advisory, Parking Advisory, and Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee. So in Michigan, the law for pedestrian crossing is sort of confusing. It says basically that a pedestrian, a driver must yield to a pedestrian in a designated walkway, but the pedestrian has to first make sure that the, you know, it's clear. They can't just step out into a walkway and expect, you know, to have the right of way. But of course, I mean, you think about it, that law, it's kind of crazy, right? Because why would you walk into a walk, you know what I'm saying, right? That, so in Washington State, so I lived in Washington State, I know you can roll your eyes. I mean, I moved back, not everything's greater on the west coast. Well, it was a great place to live in many ways. But in Washington State, the way the law reads is that a vehicle must stop for a pedestrian at the crosswalk, at the crosswalk. So even before they enter the crosswalk, if you see a pedestrian, you're required to stop. And that worked in Seattle. It's not a huge city, but it's bigger than Marquette. And, you know, there's a lot of traffic lights, of course, throughout the downtown. But as you walk like up the hill, there's a lot of stop signs, four-way stops, and pedestrians at those four-way stops always got the right of way. And I'm not saying that, you know, we're going to change Michigan law, obviously. But the point is, is that Seattle made pedestrian safety, pedestrian traffic, a priority. And, and it works there. It works, it doesn't, it works there, is what I'm saying, okay? So anyway, my point is, is, how much time do I have? Nine seconds? Jesus, okay. So anyway, I won't, I won't thank you again. I look forward to serving on the committee. Gosh, I thought that took three minutes.
Anyone else for public comment?
James Gallant, 538 Yama Road, Scandia, with the Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for clarifying the rule about the parliamentary procedure in that it appears to be the discretion of the chair. You read the rule onto the record, but you refuse the point of order. Under Robert's Rules of Order, the point of order would be, you read it onto the rule, they're onto the record. I didn't get the minutes, but it's supposed to be printed in the minutes and published in the minutes and entered into a journal. Now, I've witnessed dozen points of order over the years. And I've been doing this for 15 years. I did actually help with the Charter Commission and all that. And you had no journal, and you don't do it at all. So it appears that this rule that you made, I don't know if this lawyer did it or Ron Keith did it before he left, but that rule has a little problem because you don't seem to have any way to invoke it. Or do you just systematically invoke it by hearing no objections? You just go in and out of Robert's Rules of Order? Or at the beginning of the meeting, is it Robert's Rules of Order applied now? Do you have to invoke that you are now not using Robert's Rules? Because you didn't tell anybody you were working on this, this text thing for a year. You actually legitimately only deliberated on that for 20 minutes. And you all just were telling about apologizing for the decision you were about to make, which is inappropriate. That's like, you're not supposed to do that. So the problem here is that the mayor is now appears to be, this is, this is more a dictatorship. This is a different form of government. You're allowing her to be a dictator and then hearing no objections. And you can object all you want, but she's still going to have to go Robert's Rules. And so the problem here is, and this is why the city, I think the people of the city should think very closely and go back to the meeting last month, last time, and to get the actual, but this financial issue, that you don't even know what it is yet. This is huge. And he was talking to emergency manager. Okay, this is huge. And the problem is that the mayor has been allowed to allow the members to give inappropriate motions. And it's like candy. It's like, you know, give it to them, take it from them. Allow these inappropriate motions. Like the member, I would ask the member, that motion to approve the agenda at the last meeting is improper motion. See, what she did was, said, like to amend the agenda, to add a presentation, and then adopt it. But the duties, duties and requirements of the chair is, this is how debate works, right? You approve the agenda, now you know the question. You get to the item, duty and responsibility of the presiding officer is to entertain a motion to approve as presented, and then you can offer amendments later. The amendment came first. And this is, this is wrong. This is why you ended up with this problem. This is your legacy, Madam Mayor, and you can fix this. The point of order, the other little part about point of order, please read it onto the, onto the record, is that once you do a point of order, it resets the rules. I ask you two young men here to please do this. Motion, support, reset the rules. Because once you do a point of order, you have to save the rule until you get another written rule to replace it. And then you can't just go back and willy-nilly not do whatever.
Three minutes, thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else?
Please fix it.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. Up next, we have one presentation tonight, the Police Fire Pension Board by Chair Mike Archukowski. Mike, thank you for joining us. It's probably been a year since we've covered this topic. We're glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Board. My name is Mike Archukowski, and I'm a detective sergeant with the Market City Police Department. I'm currently the chairperson on the four-person board. Basically what we have here is a policeman and the firemen have a pension. It's provided for by our own contributions and by the city of Marquette. This was established in 1965 by a vote of the people of Marquette. And so when we adopted this Michigan, say we, I wasn't even around then, but when the act was adopted, it's a Michigan Act, 345 was already something that was established in the state of Michigan. The city of Marquette adopted it. And then so the fire and police have had the pension to live off of, especially our retired members. A little bit of background on our pension board. I've been serving for a couple of terms since 2016, the chairperson. I'm accompanied by the fire end of this, by Ken Lamar, who's a firefighter for the city of Marquette. We also have a staff liaison in Tara Barman. She works in the treasurer's office. She also sits on the board. And then we have two spots for appointees. Currently have Glenda Gordon is our trustee, and she's been serving our board since 2015. We've had one vacancy going on for a couple of years now that we're trying to fill. Last year, we held 11 meetings, 11 out of 12 available. We didn't have any unexcused absences. The only meeting we had accounts was for a lack of a quorum. Currently, our pension consists of 133 members. We have 60 that are currently paying into the system. And we have 70 police and fire that are currently drawing from it. As of April, our fund since that sits at $40 million. As of our December 31st, 2020 actuarial, we were 78% funded. That's significant because I've never seen it that high. We usually hover around 72, 74, 75, but 78% as of our last actuarial. That's a pretty high funding ratio. In 2013, the Marquette Police Fire Pension Board went to Wells Fargo Advisors as financial planners. And since 2013, the Police Fire Pension Board has experienced a, our investments have experienced a 7.66% growth. As you see in the parentheses, the brackets, Wells Fargo recently became Principal Financial Services. One accomplishment to the board. If you're a police or fire pensioner, you get 12 pension checks per year. These are people on a fixed income typically. There's people living off the pension that they earned while they worked here. One thing that we do when we're able to, when investments allow, is we issue a 13th check, and it's kind of like a bonus. On average, we pay $737 to those who are eligible, and that's on average. Some get more, some get less, but it's a little bump up as a bonus. We try to do it annually. And that's usually only done when we've invested well. We have investments to put half into reinvesting and half that can go to the 13th check when it's significant. And as part of the Board's due diligence, we annually give a summary of what we're doing to our pensioners and our members. This includes, we mail out things like, you know, I talked about the ratio. We put these things in a letter, the actuarial, actuarial assumptions, the formulas that we use to get these numbers, the assumed rate of investment return. All these things get reported to our members so they know how we are keeping their, their fund going. I'd recognize my goals and the Board's goals. It's our fiduciary responsibility to do our due diligence and to monitor our fund to make sure it keeps making money, to monitor our financial advisors. We also want to keep it viable and sustainable going forward so that the fire and police members who retire can have something to live off of. Some issues that I've seen, some issues that we've had include getting people to serve on our board, including that one vacancy I said we've had, a vacant spot for going on two, three years. It's always desirable to have at least 80% funded value, but we've hovered at, in the mid, low 70s. Getting to 78 is pretty significant. We're trying to find strategies that make it sustainable because we have, like I said, 70 takeout of the fund. And 60 of us that are currently still working are trying to put into it. And as I mentioned earlier, Wells Fargo Advisors recently became Principal Finance Group. They're in Marquette. They took over the Wells Fargo Advisors office. We just want to keep them doing as well as Wells Fargo did. And so far, they're doing a good job, and we appreciate their, their diligence to our, our fund. We'll say that. We, we meet with them quarterly to accomplish that goal of keeping our fund going. At this time, I can answer any questions the Board might have.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate the presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions or discussion for Mike? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mike, thank you for the very clear and detailed presentation. I think it's clear that you're achieving those goals that you set out, being diligent, you know, and, and really being responsible. As you said, it's so important that we make sure that our retired police and firefighters are able to have some security in their, their old age and in their retirement because they earned it. And it, I think it's really impressive that you're all nearing that 80% goal. So many public pension systems are nowhere near that, or even, you know, floating down below the 60% funded level that the state recommends. So good job, and thank you for, thank you to you and everybody else on that board for making that happen, along with Wells Fargo and now Principal. So my question is, and if you aren't sure, you know, exactly what the strategy is from a financial standpoint, that's fine. But just, you know, with the disruptions we've seen in the market, it seems that maybe the markets were a bit inflated, and there's now a correction happening. How, what's your strategy to deal with that moving forward in the next few years to keep making progress and get toward that 80% funded level?
All I can do from my perspective is keep an eye on what Principal does for us. I'm not the guy with the strategies. I don't know numbers, and I don't know much about investing. I know enough to be dangerous here with the spreadsheets that I get from Tara every month. But I do know a couple of principles about keeping our cash and keeping our bonds and our investments into a certain pie chart. 40% here, 60 there, and a little in cash. I know things like that. And I can always go back and check with Principal and see what their overall strategy is and get back to you. I think that their strategy is to try to read the market the best they can. I'm thinking, now I'm guessing, I'm assuming that they're just trying to read the market the best they can. And they've been saying that they are trying to get us through this tough time. And if that means buying and selling and buying, selling here and there, and whatever they do, when we end up with a 78% funded ratio, I got to trust that they're doing what they're supposed to do. If you wanted me to, I can get back to you about that question and figure out what the strategy is.
I think it'd be interesting just to see what they're doing and what their thought process is. Because I mean, I think we just want to make sure we can continue making that progress. And this is such an important commitment that the city's made to people who've really put their lives on the line for many years to protect our community. So I would be interested at least to see some of that, that information. But otherwise, I appreciate everything you're doing. And I also just want to mention, wanted to mention that I think it's really impressive you guys are able to, and nice of you all to give out that 13th check when you can afford it. You know, my parents are both retirees who are on fixed incomes and on, you know, have, have pensions, and they're very fortunate to have that, but it can be a challenge. So I think giving people that little bonus, that little bit of financial flexibility is, is awesome when we can do it. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mike, only one comment. It surely would be nice if we could get Mears to perform half as well as Wells Fargo was doing. If anybody's been tracking Mears and their bargaining units that are tied to it, I think the returns have certainly been less than spectacular. Again, in comparison to what we've been, you've been able to get through, through Wells Fargo. Now, that's a systemic problem through the system that we need to look at. And I'll stop pontificating, but it is interesting how you can come up with essentially the same objectives and get two different sets of returns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the commission? Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you. I have, I asked two questions for you. One, you had on your, I want to say it was the third slide, the rate of return right now was 7.66% growth since, what was that, 2013? Is that per year or is that total?
I would have to guess, I'm sorry, I'm guessing. I would have to guess that that is the total growth from 2013 as it applies to our investments.
Mary is nodding, so.
Mary's nodding, okay. Thank you.
Am I spot on?
Our CFO over there.
And let's say I could try to find you another trustee. When, when are your meetings?
We meet the fourth Tuesday of every month at 8:30 AM in the conference room down the hall.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? You all good? Thank you, Mike. We really appreciate you coming. Great to have an update as to what the pension board is doing to make sure the pensions continue for those folks who have served our community and those who still are and will benefit from it at one point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board and our members appreciate the city's contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have item three, consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote. Commissioners, do we have a motion on item three? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And we have a second. Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion? Pro Tem Mayor? Anyone else? City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bonzal, yes. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have new business, item four, residential curbside recycling cart purchase. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city has been awarded two complimentary grants. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Eagle Recycling Infrastructure Grant and the Recycling Partnership Residential Curbside Recycling Cart Grant. These grants provide the opportunity to enhance curbside collection of recyclables through the implementation of recycling carts at no cost to city residents. The project includes universal slash automatic distribution of carts, which will provide a recycling cart to every residential household that is eligible for garbage service. For the city to receive the maximum grant amount, each house will need to utilize carts for recycling. The total budget for the project is $355,200, which includes $344,000 for the acquisition, assembly, and distribution of RFID-enabled carts, and $11,200 for education and outreach. The Eagle Recycling Infrastructure Grant and the Recycling Partnership Residential Recycling Cart Grant will provide $251,000 and $93,000 for the carts respectively. The Recycling Partnership Residential Recycling Cart Grant will also provide $6,200 for education and outreach, and the remaining $5,000 in the education budget will come from the existing City Solid Waste Fund budget. Grant proceeds are paid on a reimbursement basis, meaning that grantees must make the initial purchases. The grant stipulates that the carts must be provided at no cost to residents other than the standard solid waste or recycling service taxes or fees. The City Solid Waste Collection Program has over 50% of residents utilizing the cart system. The carts that are being supplied by the hauler are from Cascade Cart Solutions of Grand Rapids, Michigan, and staff recommends waiving the competitive bidding process for this project. Purchasing the carts from Cascade will allow parts for repairs to be interchangeable. Competitive bidding is not required by the grant, and Cascade is a Michigan product that staff is already familiar with. Fiscal effect, none. The recycling carts will be reimbursed by grant proceeds. Recommendation, waive the competitive bidding process and issue a purchase order for up to 6,264 gallon recycling carts from Cascade Cart Solutions of Grand Rapids, Michigan in an amount not to exceed $344,000 for the acquisition, assembly, and distribution of the carts. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Mr. Hanley?
I move that we waive the competitive bidding process and issue a purchase order for up to 6,264 gallon recycling carts from Cascade Cart Solutions of Grand Rapids, Michigan in an amount not to exceed $344,000 for the acquisition, assembly, and distribution of the carts.
And we have a second. Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion?
I am just very excited that we are moving forward with this. I know that there's been a lot of hiccups along the way with people pushing back a little. But I think once we get this, these carts into people's hands, we are going to see a lot of people that are happier than they thought they would be. of people that are happier than they thought they would be with the carts, and I'm very excited to keep going with this.
Pro Tem Mayor, any discussion?
Yeah, you know, when we initially voted on this, I did not vote in favor of this, but the commission approved it, and at this point, it's not going to cost the city anything to provide these carts. I did notice here, though, that it is for a purchase of 64-gallon carts, and I believe originally we were looking at the 90. I'm hearing yes.
As for City Manager?
There was an initial conversation about the two sizes, but 64 was what was actually approved and decided on.
Awesome. I actually think that's probably going to be a lot easier for people to manage that. I didn't have anything else other than that.
Any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm in a similar position to Mayor Pro Tem Mayor, where I voted against the original motion to go forward with these grants, but I do think I'll be voting in favor of it tonight because I think overall, the grants, if we do this properly, will be very effective at increasing the recycling rate in the city and increasing participation in our recycling program. I think, as Commissioner Hanley said, there's going to be some growing pains, I'm sure, but luckily, we're starting several months ahead of time now with education and with kind of figuring out some of the hangups that we might have and figuring out how to resolve some of the issues residents may have, and I'm sure that our staff will be working with them. My question is, we have $11,200 for education and outreach, and I'm just curious if the city manager could go into a little bit more detail about what that education and outreach is going to look like.
Sure. So, we are currently in the onboarding process right now, and of that is really talking about scheduling and implementation, and obviously, developing the materials that will be shared with the public and with the commission to start getting the word out there. So, what this covers is the, I think there's a branding part of this, there's some stock photos, there's, you know, already proven material that has been used in messaging that has been used in other communities that we will now have available, staff time, not necessarily with us, our time, but with the company that is engaged for this, and then also the actual printed materials that they would be supplying us.
Great, thanks. And yeah, I think that it's encouraging to see that we do have a significant budget for education. I'm sure we'll have some issues, but they're not issues that other communities haven't already run into, so I'm glad to see that we're looking at what other communities have done to be successful with these grants. So, thanks, that's all I have.
Did I see, Commissioner Davis, did you have your hand raised?
I think I have mine.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you for asking that question. That was my question, too, about the education, and I also, it's my understanding that there will be opportunities for folks, maybe on a case-by-case basis, to also have specific issues addressed, because I've certainly had residents call me and be very concerned about their particular, there's particular issues with the way their lot is, yeah, so if you could speak to that, please.
Yep, so included in the materials that we will be handing out, there will be contact information to contact, whether it's us or the vendor, or depending on what situation, but we are willing to be working with everybody to really assess those needs and find the appropriate solution for every need. Now, majority of the people will not need that, but we understand that not one size fits all, but we are trying to work with that. But we are also asking for people to give it a chance.
And in particular, I should be more specific, there were folks with some disability issues and folks who were using wheelchairs at home and things like that, where there were some pretty, you know, mobility issues that they would like to be able to continue to recycle, but were concerned about their mobility.
Absolutely, and those are those very specific instances that we would be working with those individuals, and we would probably be directing those individuals to city staff to work through. But that information will certainly be communicated.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, perhaps staff can tell us how many people or what general percentage use the existing city rubbish cart?
The rubbish cart, we are, I believe, over 50%.
So, we have 60% that use the rubbish cart, and we're going to define 60% use on the recycle cart? I mean, it seems like the rubbish cart has been a failure if we can only get 60%. So, what makes us think that this is going to be more successful than that? And especially if we have people that are objecting to using the rubbish cart, now we have people that are going to be receiving another one, and it seems like that's counterintuitive to what you want success to be, which is the voluntary, obviously, recycling of the greatest amount of product that we can. Sometimes the comment is made, well, that's okay, people can take it to the waste management facility and dump off their recycle there, but I think if you look at that a little differently, you realize that the environmental footprint in doing that is considerably larger than the environmental footprint of using a trash or a recycle cart. So, that doesn't make a lot of sense, not only to include the limited hours, which then segues to the idea that you give me a cart, I don't want the cart, and I'm not going to use it. How can I get you to take it back? In other words, what process is going to be put in place for the city to pick up the carts that are not being used and to do so in a timely fashion? To tell me that I have to use this cart or have this cart for a period of time, six months or so before, you're going to like it. You'll hold on to this thing for six months, when your initial objection to having it to begin with isn't going to go away in six months. It just becomes a problem for six more months. If we were to do this with a facility that we will give you a chip to pick your cart up, or we will deliver your cart if you want it, I think we've got a great different product now. Now, we're working with volunteerism, we're working with people wanting specifically to work the environmental issue stronger, and you're building a community from the inside out instead of government down. If we really wanted to increase our recycle rate, we would simply do a city ordinance that would require every landowner, every homeowner, to recycle all products for the fine nature. We put it in that form, then we have enforcement, we have directive, and we have outcome. What we're doing now is a little self-delusional, thinking that we're going to really use these carts, everybody's going to love them, when there's a number of people that are not going to use them and not going to love them, and therefore, we're not going to have the desired outcome. I will be voting no on the proposition, Your Honor, but that's the reason.
Understood. Commissioner Stonehouse, and just to kind of refresh, we are not voting on whether or not the program exists. The commission's already voted on that. This is voting on whether or not to waive the competitive bidding process and order the carts from said company.
Right, and I will be voting against that.
And that's fine. Just wanted to clear it up in case folks at home were thinking we're voting on the original topic, which was a few months ago. Any other discussion on this item before we go ahead and take a vote? Well, I just wanted to add that I do hear your concerns, Commissioner Stonehouse, but I think that we have measured approaches in place and in the works that I think that this program has a chance for success, and I don't think there are many other programs like this out there where we have an opportunity to do it for such a low cost. So, to me, it's worth a shot, and I hope I'm not wrong.
Find out?
We will find out. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one. Item five on new business, resolution authorizing 2022 capital improvement bonds. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. In order to continue the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for fiscal year 2022 projects, a resolution must be approved that the city will authorize the sale of the bonds. A notice of intent resolution was approved on May 31, 2022. Fiscal effect, a debt service schedule will be produced upon close, which is currently scheduled for August 24, 2022. Recommendation, approve the resolution authorizing 2022 limited tax general obligation bonds and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes, Your Honor. I motion to approve the resolution authorizing the 2022 limited general tax obligation bonds and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
No further discussion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, although it's always a little unsettling to approve a $6 million bond, you know, I think we need to recognize that we were initially looking at something like a $9.5 million bond, and that we've been able to reduce that to what we have. So, it's actually a good thing that we are able to do that. Just for the people, if people are looking at this agenda item and they look at the development capital outlay, for those that drive often on College Avenue, and, you know, we had some hope that that was going to be rehabilitated, I would say, in the near future, and I'm just, I'm pretty sure what's happening with the new hospital or the old hospital and what's happening, but if the city manager could just explain why the College Avenue was removed from this list and what will be happening with that in the future.
Gladly. So, College Ave obviously is recognized as one of those roads that does need some reconstruction, but however, because we had the ability to kind of include that after a significant amount of work is being done in that area for either demolishing the buildings that are existing right now as the old Marquette, former Marquette General Hospital, or if there was, you know, Brownfield opportunity, and that had come before us pretty quickly after we made this decision to remove this. So, that is essentially why it is now out of the current list for this next year and will be in the next, hopefully, five to seven years thereafter, when that work is completed. And the worst thing you want to do is really reconstruct a road and then have a bunch of heavy machinery and demo happening right there again.
Yes, thank you. So, folks on College Avenue, we haven't forgotten about you, we just have a different plan.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Hill?
Could you speak, did the, the budget, the state budget was finalized, and there was some money that seemed to be coming our way? Is that, any of that money going to impact what we're doing with these sales or these projects?
Not necessarily for these projects that are identified in the bond issuance.
Just to be clear, so on page 153 of our 153-page packet for this meeting is the capital development outlay, and so the numbers, just so I'm clear, the numbers that we're going, there's numbers in green and numbers in blue, and the numbers in blue are what we're bonding for, but what, I didn't quite understand what the green meant, to be honest. Sorry for the public that can't see this.
So, mine is not color copied, right, at this point, but let me just, let me just actually maybe provide some clarification on this, because as Commissioner Davis had alluded to, we were looking at a $9.5 million bond issuance with all the project costs that we have right now, or estimated at some point. And because of the bids that had come in for Lake Shore Boulevard coming in lower than what we had anticipated, on top of additional bond proceeds that are actually in that other box, I believe, when I look at your screen, it's the blue box, we were able to get this down to a bond issuance not to exceed $6 million. And again, that is what we're estimating at this point, hopefully, just being very conservative, which is why you see a potential bond needs a 5.35, or 5.36 at this point.
So, there's a chance that we would be only bonding for 5.3, and we'll know that for sure on the 24th, on August 24th?
Perhaps, but we also are remaining conservative and know that costs are increasing daily.
Thank you.
Any other discussion for Tem Mayor?
Thank you, and I'm going to follow-up question for you. The, so potentially, we're looking at saving three and a half to four million dollars from what we were originally projecting for this as far as the bonding goes?
If you do, yes, essentially, if you do the math.
Okay, and that, and this is covering, just so everyone at home's also understanding this, this is covering capital improvement, Lake Shore, and Hemlock Development Infrastructure, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you help us out?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. That brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Comments may not exceed three minutes. Please state your name and physical address unless you've already done so at this meeting. Anyone for public comment?
James Gallant, Scandia. Yes, and to continue our conversation, which we're just going to have to hash this out, I guess, over time, maybe the next couple of years, but please just schedule a special meeting with a public hearing. You get the citizens, they can come in here, and they can say what you think about your little sideline, your little sidebar agreement that you've done about, you know, unanimous consent without actually having to say it and invoking. It's kind of a waiver, waiver suspension of the rules completely. And as I said, you know, I did help author with Tom Baldini the requirements of your charter. Yeah, back then, here at all the meetings, okay? And in that, that's why I'd like to, from the floor, I'd like to file a complaint against this entire commission, all your members, and the mayor, against the ethics ordinance. This is unethical because the, unless you change that, unless you take that definition out. And what's the definition of guidelines, you see? It's like you approve, your personal opinions, you cannot put your personal opinions and represent that to be the opinion of the city. The city's opinion is, the rule is, you voted to make this the guidelines. Now, did you make a, did you got a definition of guidelines that says you don't have to follow guidelines? Your guidelines, I mean, they're like guidelines, they're like, guys, it's like drawing in the lines, you know? You draw a rainbow, but, you know, if it's not in the lines, it's kind of like, okay? So, you could just address this and get this going, and get a written legal opinion from your attorney. You know, Ron Keefe was all, you know, Ron Keefe was just, you know, he was just following whatever the mayor did to keep his job. He's very successful. You people are very successful at this, absolutely. And so are the people that are coming up, being groomed to do this breach, because what you just did on this new items, you just did this. The mayor assigned the floor to the clerk. The clerk is an officer, is a secretary of this board, has full rights of debate without vote. You assign the floor for debate, deliberation on a job you know you have to vote on, and without a motion. And then all of a sudden, the member comes back and says, oh, I'd like to make a motion, and she's got it all reason off the teleprompter there. What is the purpose of not having a motion? There's got to be some benefit, and it's got to be huge, because it's so you could just, well, we guess maybe need a little more information about that, and you send it back to the clerk, and you come back next time, and then there was never no motion. You know, do it all the time. And like, remember Stonehouse talked about, you don't get these rental fees because of the chair of the county commission? Yeah, that's how he runs it, too. The chair didn't want that, so they didn't get it, and they didn't do it, and that's how it works. We've got to figure out here, this is the bully victim situation. Who's bullying who here? Because now your members can say, hey, Mayor, don't follow the rules, or we'll just get somebody else in here. The mayor's saying, well, wait a minute, you gotta let her not follow the rules, or she's not going, she's going to get some improper motion, she's going to let you do it, and you're going to have a problem with your housing projects and whatnot. And I'm concerned is, my biggest concern is the children that you had sitting up here shadowing you. Did you tell them you weren't following the rules at that time?
That's three minutes. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? That's three minutes?
This is a risk for suicide for the people of the city.
Would you like me to have someone escort you? Oh, it's three minutes. Thank you. Anyone else?
I get to judge myself, though.
No, you do not. Three minutes is three minutes.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you don't follow the rules, that's right.
Anyone else for public comment?
Michael Braw, Marquette. Just coming to ask if there's not a way that we could possibly have a conversation or a meeting about electrical cords.
Really?
You guys know that. About food trucks and electrical cords. I understand that something may have happened recently, but a letter went out last week notifying us of it, chapter 35, I believe, of food owners, no cords going across city sidewalk. The food truck, fellow food truck owners, myself and some of the local breweries, are just wondering if there's any way we could have a conversation to find solutions that everyone could come to an agreement on that would be both safe, effective, and keep green energy and ambiance at something that everyone can benefit from. That's all.
And just to note, our time to comment on public comment is at the end of the meeting during commission comments, so in a moment, if you just hang tight. Anyone else for public comment?
Ryan Miller, 712 Chippewa Square. I'd like to continue addressing the issue of the fluoride. I had planned to cover certain topics more in depth, but given that Dave Campana made some comments after Valerie and I had some comments after Valerie and I had left last time, I'd like to address some of the statements he made. First of all, I don't get any of my information from Facebook, never have, never will, not even on Facebook and I don't use it. Second of all, every organization in the world is not 100% in favor of fluoride in the water. That's why 97% of Europe no longer has fluoride in the water. If you've been to certain European countries, I've been to 16 European countries, spent a lot of time there, you know that they actually have a higher standard of living than us. None of those countries now allow fluoridation. Third, he said statements by these organizations are subjected to peer review. That also is not necessarily true. The raw research, which is what should be used to construct these statements, is usually subject to peer review, but organizational statements often are not. They're generally composed more of a consensus, composed more from a consensus process. So it leads me to wonder how two people can have such different views on the subject. Dave is a reasonable person, intelligent person, I think I am too. Analyzing some of Dave's presentation, I think I've come up with some answers. Dave cited a litany of alphabet agencies and organizations from the CDC and WHO to the ADA and AMA. That may be part of the problem. It would appear he gets his information from them, but they all have a history of errors, many very profound. I could go into them, I could speak for a good hour on that. It would appear he gets his information from them, but equally important, that information has been filtered and curated and there is a tendency in all those groups to want to preserve the status quo, protect their position for legal and other reasons or to profit. Those opposing fluoridation, like myself, have no such agendas, only agendas the health of our citizens, especially our youngest and most vulnerable citizens. Rather than getting information second or third hand from these groups, I prefer to get the information firsthand directly from the latest raw scientific research. One such source is the NCBI, National Center for Biotechnology Information. It too is a government organization, but it presents original research in its purest form, not in a filtered or curated form. There are other original scientific sources if one chooses to do a little homework. Looking at this scientific information directly, one can't help but notice a trend. The latest research exposing the dangers of researches of fluoride is growing, whereas the body of information supporting the lead safety of fluoride is shrinking in comparison and there's a definite legacy bias to it. Most of that information is from the mid-1940s to the mid-1970s and is definitely not current. Again, if you want to check, read the many studies cited by the Fluoride Action Network to be continued. I know I don't have enough time to cover this in the depth I'd like. Thank you.
Minutes, anyone else? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start out with Commissioner Stonehouse.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The only comment I'd like to make tonight is to assure the public that the commission does indeed follow rules and procedures. This is from the currently accepted document, City of Marquette Commission Policy, and it establishes how meetings are run, et cetera, et cetera. In order to facilitate the running of an efficient and orderly meeting, the rules of parliamentary practice as found in the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Orders will be used for guidance, period. The mayor may also appoint a parliamentarian. I believe the mayor has appointed a city attorney to fulfill that role.
Yes, sir.
So we have full responsibility within our rule structure. We also have the services of a very competent city attorney as our parliamentarian. So I would assure everybody that indeed the proper procedure as established by this commission and by our parliamentarian is being followed. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank folks for a productive meeting tonight and an efficient meeting. And I'm excited about some of the news that's come out about the state budget, how our community might be able to benefit from various initiatives in that state budget. I understand that there's some, about, there's about $15 million in funds coming to the UP to support workforce housing in that kind of lower mid-price range as well as childcare in the UP, both of which are huge needs that have been identified as major obstacles to economic development and quality of life in the UP by economic development organizations, government agencies, local governments, including the City of Marquette. So I'm excited about that. Really excited to see funding for a new and expanded Jacob Eddy Veterans Home, which may also create future opportunities for that, the property in which it's currently located. And I'm also glad to see that we're getting some funding to help with demolition at the hospital site. Just, you know, clarifying that those grants and that line item appropriation in the state budget are going to demolition costs, not to, you know, lining, you know, pockets or, you know, padding profits for a developer, but toward taking care of demolition costs, getting that brownfield plan paid out and getting that property back in the city tax rolls much sooner than otherwise would have been possible. And also perhaps providing more flexibility within this project for more workforce housing to be incorporated into it. At least that's my hope and I hope that the city will be pushing very hard for that to happen, given the good news about the additional $8 million in funding that the state appropriated for that project. Other than that, I just want to thank everybody that signed up serving our committees and just wanted to note that personally, I like Barbara Ozai's idea about renaming our, the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee to the Traffic Parking and Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee. I think that it would be a small change, but a nice statement of, you know, what our priorities are in the community. We say we're a walkable, bikeable community. Maybe we should have equal priority given to pedestrians and pedestrian safety as to vehicles on our city streets. So that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I'm also very excited that we're going to have the Traffic and Parking Committee back in action. And Barb, it sounded like you had a lot more to say during your public comments and I think that you are absolutely the right person to be on that committee and I look forward to hearing more about those things. In regards to the food truck, let's start that conversation and I'm not aware of what's went on, but the city manager has office hours this coming Wednesday from 10 to 12 at the Peter White Public Library. And if you can make it or other people that have the same concerns that you have, that would be a good place to start the conversation. And other than that, yes, there were a lot of good news out of the state budget real recently and I share all of what Commissioner Bonzal was saying. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I have been spending the last 10 minutes trying to research different things for you about what different cities have done with their ordinances. I do see many cities that do. I assume that, I also know nothing about the situation that happened. I assume that the cord that was there was covered with a ramp. I know a lot of cities that I've been seeing on here have a specific size ramp that they have to have, scaled, things like that, that has to be flat, all these things. I also don't quite know exactly why the city has the ordinance written the way they do. I'm assuming it's for safety reasons and not to cause incidents, but I do think that if this is an incident that's causing a hardship on our residents that have food trucks that provide wonderful food to our area, I think it is something that we should look into and make sure we're working with you and trying to move forward on that. We want to help people with their businesses right now, but we also want to keep safety. So I think it's something that we can definitely work together with and try and find a solution, hopefully, that works for everyone. Other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll just briefly add one thing to that, that all of our emails are on the city website. If you even want to just email us a little bit more detail as far as the issue that yourself and fellow food truck owners are encountering, that would be useful and make sure to send that to the city manager as well. One thing I would love to hit on, because I love parliamentary procedure, I'm really glad Commissioner Stonehouse brought up the fact that we have our own adopted policy for how we conduct meetings, which is reviewed annually by the commission following our organization's meeting, I believe. And additionally, we have the city charter, which has some other aspects that tell us how certain things are going to need to be operated. And again, Robert's Rules of Order is more like a guideline. At any point in time, the mayor was out of order and one of us wanted to, I mean, we could, any of us could make a motion to question the mayor's last and Robert's Rules of Order would say chair, but the mayor would be appropriate to say here. And by a simple majority vote, the commission can overrule the mayor on any decision. It's right there in the book. I don't know what addition you have, but we use the newest one. However, per Robert's Rules of Order, the agenda more or less is the mayor, the mayor's or the chair's document. Every organization I've been in that has any form parliamentary procedure, that is the operating procedure with it. And the mayor actually gives us quite a bit of flexibility to have a say in that and our city documents also do. You know, by approving the agenda at the start, you know, you mentioned, we get to this new item and then we're making motions on this item. We already approved the agenda packet as a whole. So having the next document pulled up is already a part of the agenda that we're discussing. There is a need to be a motion to add it to the meeting. We already did that. And as far as reading it off, I've seen us multiple times make amendments to what is presented to us as well as just outright change whatever it is, much probably to, a little bit distress city staff out as far as us just kind of changing some things, but we follow the rules up here very well, I think. And this is probably the most organized public meeting I've ever been a part of and I just wanted to make sure that was stated. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I wanted to, a couple, two things. So I actually worked on pedestrian bicycle safety. Barb, I can't see you behind the podium, but in my, whatever, late 90s, early 2000s part of my career, and I'm really excited about the idea of the city taking on the questions of not just traffic and parking, but also pedestrian and bicycle advocacy as well. And tied to that, for better or for worse, I am hearing more concerns about the e-bikes, which are both a wonderful way to increase mobility and to have, get exercise and have less reliance on fossil fuels and be healthier, has a lot of upsides, but there's also, I'm hearing increasing concerns about, you know, people being afraid on the path because people are passing them and not letting people know that they're going to pass. We're going through a mobility transition, I would, is one way to talk about it. I have a lot of resources from those days. There's a conference I was just looking, it's called, it was called Pro Walk, Pro Bike for a while, it's now called Walk Bike Places. And there's a big program at the CDC called Active People Healthy Nation. There's a lot of fun, interesting, fun, fun ways of making it safer for us to be out walking. At the beginning of our lives, at the end of our lives, most of us aren't going to be, you know, we're not driving until we're 16. When you get older, you might not be driving. And so, and to make it a fun and vibrant way, to make walking fun and vibrant. And as folks have heard me say up here before, I also share your concerns about how we clear the sidewalks and how as a city with, you know, significant winter, maybe we could be paying more attention to that to make sure that folks who don't have access to vehicles are able to walk and feel safe. So I'm really excited about that and hope that I can help with that over time. And then the second thing I wanted to just talk about is the bonds and how this year we are only bonding for two projects that have very specific purposes and very specific other funding sources to support the work that's going in, meaning Lake Shore Boulevard and the new housing that's being developed over at Division and the 553. And then, then there's also the maintenance, there is some maintenance engaged in that that's going to be included with that as well. And with our goal of being that, you know, over time, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are looking to actually do less of this as bonding and more of it as funding in the general fund that we have available to us. Could you maybe speak a little bit more to that, please, city manager?
Certainly. Something that we are really focusing on, our efforts for the financial future of the city, is being able to fund improvements, capital projects, simp, you know, specifically as well, which is this street improvements program, with cash versus having to go out for bonds. Now, in order to get to that point, though, we will have to really get to a point where we have healthy reserves, have paid for all of our obligations and then be able to start designating certain reserves and funds that can go into more of a capital improvements reserve specifically and have that build up while we are looking towards the future of projects, but also those maintenance costs and things like that. So it's going to take some time to get there and we will first have to address the debt that we currently have even prior to the issuance now and get that to a point where we're comfortable and able to fund that and pay for that without any other increases. So it's a long-term goal that starts now. So those are the conversations we'll start having during budget. And again, you're not going to see anything for quite some time because we have to get to a point where we can afford that.
Thank you for making that so clear. I think with the state funds that are available in this budget decision, as was described by Commissioner Bonzal, and there's more money, there's still $7 billion sitting at the state right now that I understand is eventually going to be allocated, probably not till lame duck in December, but there will be more funding coming at that time as well that we could also be thinking about how we could use that funds to support some of this work and these capital improvements. And most significantly, even as we're paying down our debt, we are continuing to maintain our infrastructure so that we don't fall further behind. And so in making those investments on our maintenance, we are, we are making smart and prudent decisions about how we can maintain particularly our sanitary sewers, those things that we absolutely depend on that are underground, need to be dug up, cost, cost a fair amount of money. It's one of those things, it seems if you put that off a year or two, you really dig yourself literally a bigger hole. And so I'm proud that we were able to vote on this tonight and that we're making steps towards actually having, moving towards being able to spend cash on these, on these important allocations. Thank you.
Got a few items tonight. Good meeting, efficient meeting, kind of a light agenda this go around, but I'm sure we'll have more to come and we kind of just came off a pretty heavy season, so summer is that time when a lot of us are focused on other things. And on that note, I wanted to give a special thanks to all of our Fourth of July festivities, folks, the parade organizers, anyone who had a float in the parade. I know the kids were really happy to see a really robust and fun parade with candy and not having to wear masks or distance and, you know, it was nice to be outside and see that happening. Also the Market County Exchange Club for the food festival that went on for three days and then the Market Area Fourth of July Celebration Committee for the fireworks. I think it was the best show I've ever seen anywhere. I don't know if anyone caught it, I've got a couple of videos on my phone if anyone wants to look at them after, but best show and it was timed to music if you listened and they even had the You Don't Talk About Bruno song in there from Encanto, the kids movie. Anyway, it was great. Couple other things. Question for our city attorney related to the rules of procedure. If an individual did want to file an ethics complaint, would you please remind me of how that is accomplished?
I am not aware of that ever having occurred, so honestly, I would have to look that up, but I would assume that that could be filed with the manager's office and relayed to me for review.
Okay. So I think that would be the starting route. I take those kinds of complaints very seriously, so if that's something that anyone would like to do, certainly, please contact the city manager, city manager's office and the city attorney can review from there. I commented on the rules of procedure on June 27th. I will continue to do so. If we still have comments on this, I believe we were on a fair and efficient meeting here before I came on board, before I was mayor. I believe that I've done that while I've been mayor, if you take pride in that fact. And I won't be commenting on that further, other than I will keep repeating this if this continues to be something that is an issue. That is all I will say on that. Food trucks, I'm hoping we can help you out. I don't know all the details, but our city manager, I believe, can address it in her comments and if we need to investigate further after the meeting, we'll do so and get back to you. If you want to stay after the meeting so we can get some contact information, that could be helpful as well. And then fluoride, I appreciate you coming and expressing your opinion. I do believe fluoride is safe. I don't know what the views of all the commissioners are, but at this point in time, I'm not hearing from the public a big outcry to change that. I don't anticipate it. You're certainly welcome to come and state your thoughts on the matter, but doesn't seem to be something there's a lot of movement on at this point in time. I will now turn things over to our city manager. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. So to touch on the food trucks, the mobile food vendors, so we were made aware of an incident where there was a power cord that was going over a bike path and it is something that is against the current ordinance. something that is against the, the current ordinance for, I think, very specific reasons. Obviously, looking at this incident, it was in an area where there is heavy bike traffic. However, the ordinance covers all locations, and making exceptions for extension cords to go over the bike path or sidewalk would need to be done with careful consideration, especially in locations like this where there is, is a heavy traveled route daily, actually. So, if the commission is interested in us reviewing our, our current ordinance and making changes as such, I, I would need a little bit more direction from the commission as a whole, so. But I do want to say that there has been specific instances, and the section that is covering it has two points in there. One that covers a food truck that is on city property and cannot draw off using utilities drawn from the city-owned or controlled property. And then also further, in, I think, point 19 or section 19, it does say that power cables or similar devices shall not run across a city street or alley and shall not be run on the ground access or with, within pedestrian walkways or areas, and that is specifically covering that incident that we are aware of. Did you have something? I, I can defer. Got it. So, again, we can certainly take a closer look at this if the commission would like us to.
I, I think I'm getting the sense from the commission that we are definitely interested in finding a solution, or a few solutions, and whatever your recommendation is, we can take it under advisement, but certainly. I know a lot of folks really enjoy the food trucks that are, I bet I can picture the establishment or establishments that are impacted, and, you know, I certainly don't want to be responsible for stopping that.
Absolutely. We all, we all, I will, we all love our food trucks in our restaurants that we have in town.
But finding a way to do it safely.
Finding a way to do it safely is always our goal, but we do have to take into every account, every specific instance in every location that we do have. I do want to say that many of our food trucks are required to use those generators, which we are aware can be noisy, and especially in some of our neighborhoods. So we, we certainly look at all aspects, but this is what we are working at at this point, and obviously, we all know how much work does go into our ordinances, so to review these, it might take a little bit of time, so I'm just going to say that it might not be the next meeting, but we will certainly look at, at their, at the options and come up with some solutions. And we have been doing that, actually, with our food trucks, vendors as we are right now. So that's food trucks.
Great, thank you. Anything else you have?
Yeah, you know what, and I just want to remind everybody that we do have office hours that are coming up this Wednesday, July 13th, from 10:00 to noon at the Peter White Public Library. That's your opportunity to just kind of come in, have a cup of coffee, and just sit down in more casual conversation. Sometimes we have special visitors from our, from a commissioner, some department heads do attend, so you do kind of get, get it all, and it's a, more of an easy conversation to have, so. And one last thing, those fireworks was absolutely wonderful. I've been to quite a few firework shows across the state, and this was by far the, the best Fourth of July. Don't tell the others, but the best Fourth of July fireworks show that I had ever been to. And I really look forward to every year, I think it just gets better and better out here, so. Nice job to the crew that did that. That's it, thank you.
Great. We are adjourned at 7:09 PM. Thank you, everyone.